I'm gonna start our meeting for February 27, 2018. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilor Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
If we have no public hearing, so we'll go right into our regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
This is Curtis Wilson. Would you come leaders in prayer, too?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just pause for this time of prayer. What a privilege it is to come into your presence. For in your presence is the fullness of joy. Thy right hand our pleasures forevermore. We thank you for this privilege to call upon your holy and righteous name. We pray your blessings upon the city of Hammond, our nation, our neighborhoods here, there, and everywhere. We pray through the power of your Holy Spirit that you will lead and guide and direct your servants even on tonight. We pray you will grant them the wisdom and knowledge and understanding to do all things well. We thank you for it. Bless everyone under the sound of my voice, every family that is represented here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Bless you. Yes, sir.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Any council report?
Mr. President, I have an update on the Zimari Park Aquatic Center Advisory Committee. And I did send everyone from the council and administration a copy. And since we do have a few people, I'll just kind of briefly go over what we talked about. We've had our second meeting, and we, the committee identified the following potential users for the pool in our Phase 1. We're looking, I'm assuming that as we wrap this up, we'll be able to give advice to the council soon, but we're looking at some users, leisure users, high school, public and private, junior high, public and private, senior citizens, and a competition pool. We spent a good bit of time renaming, not necessarily renaming it, but trying to really find the right terms so that we could adopt the right terms, so we can make sure everybody understands. And I think we settled on a multipurpose type pool to meet those different needs. The next step for us now is to, we're waiting on the administration to get a pricing, a cost plan together. And then, once we get that done, we're gonna try to meet one more time and work on some pricing and make a recommendation to the council to probably try to close this thing out. Obviously, the goal is to have the pool in operation by the summer of 2019. So you'll get the details in your email. And so that would be Phase 1. And Phase 2 would be looking at how we potentially expand the splash park to include some type of a small recreational pool, but that's gonna potentially be in Phase 2. Obviously, there's gonna be a funding conversation. And as we get more, as we get an idea of what this pool is gonna look like, then we'll be able to determine what's the funding requirement going to be, and then we'll work on that at that point. But we're getting close to finishing up.
Mayor?
Hammond Torbotics had a program, and they introduced that new robot. And while I was there, Bayou Lego, I don't know if you're familiar with those, but they were over in the children's museum, and they did robotics type with Legos. They have done such a phenomenal job during the Nationals and during the competition that Dow Chemical noticed them and said, "Listen, if you can create more teams, more clubs like this, I will fund you, I'll fund you in the other clubs." So now, we have clubs that are formed from 4th grade through 8th grade in our public school system, and are now also working with STEM and getting ready to go into the Hammond High School STEM program. So a lot of good things happening in Hammond, and they're starting at a very young age, which is what we need. So congratulations to the Bayou Lego team and also Hammond Torbotics. Also, DEQ approved the pre-application on the sewer treatment pond. So we'll be putting in full application next week, and we'll be bringing it to the council for approval, and as for the pond, we talked about last meeting. And this morning, we were on the radio with Johnny in the morning with Barbara McCaskin. She'll be leaving us and moving to Ruston, Louisiana with her family. She's been instrumental. She was Mayor McCaskin's wife, and she's been a big part of Keep Hammond Beautiful. And I had a good time with her on Johnny in the morning this morning, talking. Johnny's mother showed up, and a lot of folks kept rolling in and out. And so that was a good time this morning. That's my report.
Okay, are they in? New business in order to like to be recognized? If not, pull the minutes, please.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Old business, none, new business?
Number 1, a resolution to approve Kim's Market and Deli LLC located at 1705 CM Fagan Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, to sell high-low packaged alcohol. The owner is Kim's Market and Deli LLC, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. We have a change of ownership at Kim's Deli on Fagan. They have filled out all of their applications and met all of the regulations and rules that we've asked them to do. I have a representative owner here tonight. If you have any questions, I'm gonna call him up.
Okay, my name is Kirk Kim. I took over the Kim's Market and Deli on 1705 CM Fagan Drive. And I'm a building owner, and I used to, went to the building, but whoever tenant has failed the business, so I'm coming back to the building. And I'm just open up to you, building, very likely before, same.
Do you have his name and number?
Put his name and address.
You have it?
Any questions from the council?
No.
Let y'all to count.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 2, a resolution accepting the donation of three bullet and stab-resistant K-9 vests from nonprofit vested interest in Canines Inc. for Hammond Police Department K-9 Bishop Coa and Roco, Charles Brocher.
This one's pretty self-explanatory. vested interest in Canines is a nonprofit out of Taunton, Massachusetts. The value of the vest is anywhere from 1,700 to about $2,000. I think we'll be getting the more expensive one, which is ballistic, bulletproof, and stab-resistant. Each of the dogs will receive a vest. There's no matching funds. We're pretty excited about this one, so we're asking for your approval to accept it.
Marshall. Marshall to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number 3, a resolution to approve change order number 1 on bulkhead improvements, FY 2016, project number 42011609, for an increase of $5,888.10. And that's Jay Pittman.
Good afternoon. Should have hyperlink the change order. What this consists of is for the USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Service, grant project over on South Hazel Street between 2nd Avenue and 3rd Avenue. We replaced, as a part of the grant, the bulkhead that was failed over there. They are nearing completion. The sheet pile is driven, and they are working consistently over there. This change order consists of, when they were pulling out a portion of the bulkhead, we noticed a failure or a void behind the existing sidewalk. And what this does is, with y'all's approval, allows them to restabilize, bring in new fill, and repour the sidewalk. So the total change order amount was $5,888.10. Now, let me remind you, this is a 90-10 grant, so the city of Hammond's portion is only So that's what the city of Hammond would be responsible for.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 4, a resolution to approve amendment number 3, Notice of Grant and Agreement Award on Bulkhead Improvements, FY 2016, project number 42011609. Jay Pittman.
You should have hyperlink the Notice of Grant Award and Agreement. This was given, provided to us from the NRCS. Basically, all this does is amend the original agreement to include the change order amount that you all just approved. So this is a formality as far as the federal government's concerned, so it just changes the amount of funding. I'd like to make a recommendation that y'all approve.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of an ordinance. Old business, number 1, final adoption of an ordinance to regulate filming and to provide for film apartments. Councilman Jason Hood.
Yes, sir. We were able to make the necessary adjustments that the local media had requested for this filming ordinance, which, you know, as I talked about at the last council meeting, that sets standards for the filming companies that come in, so that the public will know what the city indeed gets for their inconvenience. And I'll answer any questions that they have.
I had a chance to talk to Nick about it as well, I think Andre. So I was fine, if he was fine with the changes. I mean, you might wanna just, for the audience, tell them with the changes, you know, the minor, the small minor.
I think it was, it would exclude local media companies and productions that were less than five staff members.
Yes, sir, I can help you with that. It's actually the commercials. What they've requested is accepting commercials that involve less than five people. And it does involve closing a public street. So it can involve closing a public street, filming commercials, less than five people in a production. That's what they requested, and the ordinance has been changed like that.
Okay. And that's better for the local business to not be tied into that process?
It's probably gonna most affect them. Now, we didn't just limit it to local business.
Right, but that's, they're a part of that process.
Yes.
All right, good.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing.
Number 1, introduction of an ordinance to regulate door-to-door solicitation. Andre Hudran.
Mr. President, members of the council, there are some fairly recent federal court cases on door-to-door solicitations and cities' abilities to regulate that. As a result of that, the Louisiana Municipal Association suggested that we all look at our ordinances and be sure they're compliant with that federal legislation. So this was the result of that process. Chief Stewart was consulted, and the city prosecutor was consulted, administration was consulted, and so we've recommended these changes. You'll see what looks like a lot of changes, but actually, it just adopts and codifies what we're already doing. And I'm happy to give you more detail at the public hearing and at the final adoption.
Motion to introduce.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for March 13, 2018. Number 2, introduction of an ordinance to declare a S surplus and authorize the sale of items listed below to sale on govdeal.com. Jennifer.
Good evening. First, I'd like to ask to amend Unit 614 to read 2006 Chevy Trailblazer.
Make a motion to amend the agenda for item number 614, read 2006 Chevy Trailblazer.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion amended.
Okay, what we have here is vehicles that departments have turned in. They're no longer of use to them. We're asking council to approve them as surplus and allow us to sell them on govdeals.
I just have one question. Where do we use the Nissan Altima? I just was wondering.
Both of these Nissan Altima's were seized vehicles from the police department. They actually...
The kind of vehicles?
Nissan Altima's.
Wait, for what purpose?
Seized vehicles.
Oh, they were seized? Okay, okay. All right, thanks. I was just wondering.
Yes, sir. They actually used one of them for quite a couple of years.
Oh, really? Okay.
Motion to introduce.
Second. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for March 13, 2018. Number 3, introduction of an ordinance to amend the towing ordinance regarding the rotating record law. Chief Stewart.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? The new ordinance is a compilation of working with the state police and updating our ordinance to bring it in line with kind of what the state police do, and kind of updated with some of the requirements that were needed for the towing companies. Had a meeting with the tow truck operators a couple of months ago. Came to some conclusions on a few, on a few changes in the ordinance. For the most part, the ordinance didn't change. We just added the 30-minute mark for response times to traffic accidents or tow requests, regardless of what they are. We've asked the tow operators to make sure that their trucks are equipped with the proper cleaning equipment that's regulated by the state and mandated by the state. There's a few other things. We just kind of tailored it up, fixed it, and brought it in line and in compliance with kind of what other agencies are doing as well, and make it a little more business-friendly as well. Whenever there's issues, they're gonna, we're gonna work with them first before we have to start taking any type of enforcement action or pulling them off the list. It's a very good rotational list. A lot of the guys on there have been on it forever. I would eventually say we had about 20, 20 operators at the meeting at the police station. It was very well, well-received. And so if you, if anybody has any further questions, then I can address it at the formal hearing on the 13th.
Mr. President, I know this is the introduction. I just have a couple local wrecker guys that live in District 2. So this, this changes, I read over it today, but I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with the whole ordinance. This doesn't, is not gonna affect the local guys?
No, not at all.
It's not gonna adversely affect them?
Actually, I was kind of hoping that it would be an enhancement to these guys, to be honest with you.
Okay.
From, from the part, I think, I think where you see, where you may see the enhancement is, is that if we're giving them latitude, if, if the driver's gonna be late to a scene or there's an issue with him not being able to respond, not gonna, we're not gonna penalize him on the first, on the first, first, on the first flag, so to speak. We're gonna give him a warning, give him some, work with them as, you know, and give him, give him an opportunity. But we try to make it a little more, a little more user-friendly, I would say.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Lamar Marshall. Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for March 13, 2018.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna be dismissed, and we'll start at 6 o'clock with our... We're gonna start off tonight with a prayer of the House of James Henry, of the Department
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, I would ask that all of us in here would bow our heads as we go to our Father in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come unto you tonight, dear Lord, giving thanks for all your blessings. We thank you for waking us up this morning, dear Father, in our right minds, dear Father. You've moved us throughout the day, dear Father, and brought us up until this point. So we ask on tonight, dear Father, that as we gather around these chambers, dear Father, to honor Brother Henry the Day, dear Lord. That we keep in mind, dear Father, all the many blessings that you have given us, dear Father. How you have kept us when we could not have kept ourselves, dear Father. Have you given us roofs over our heads, dear Father, food to eat, and clothes on our back? We thank you, dear Father, for our leaders, dear Father, who help us, dear Lord, in this community. We thank you for our mayor, dear Lord, and our police officers who serve with pride, dear Father, and with the service, dear Father, of honorability, dear Lord. And we thank you, and we thank them for this service. And Lord, we ask, dear Lord, that as we gather around, dear Father, that we continue to honor you, dear Lord, in spirit and in truth. We ask all of these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And once again, welcome. I'd like to recognize a few folks tonight. Judge Grace Gaseway, thank you for being here. Retired Judge Earl Carter, thank you, sir. This is Robby, our legislator. Robby's gonna come up and say a few words for, on behalf of the governor and the legislature. Also, we have Curtis Wilson. Is he still here? There he is. Thank you for being here as well, sir. So at this time, we're gonna move right along, and we're gonna let Lamar Marshall come on
I think it's Dangerfield's gonna come up first.
Is she here? I should have asked she is.
How could you, how could you miss her, huh? There you go.
You don't fail down. Oh, good evening, everyone. And I am so elated to see all of you all here this evening, and this is really something that I've looked forward to ever since Councilman Dangerfield passed. And I was thinking a few moments ago, before I left home, that there isn't anyone that I can think of that's in here tonight is more deserving of this award than Mr. Henry Jackson. And I know you are where you are because of Ms. Jackson. And I don't want you to ever think that you can get all the credit by yourself, because I know from experience that she went through a lot, being home alone, her and her family, while you were out seeing about all of us. And so, again, I would like to say thank you all for coming, and I'm asking you all to continue to pray for the family, the Dangerfields, as well as the Jacksons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. My job is to talk about why we're here. You know, it's amazing that this, this ordinance resolution was passed back in 2012. It's been that long. And, you know, Councilman Blunt and I spent a lot of time together working on how we can really introduce our, keep, ensure that the memory of Wilbert L. Dangerfield would continue within the city of Hammond. You know, Mr. Dangerfield was one of the, one of the most, I guess, one of the toughest councilmen that we, from what I've been told, because I wasn't here during the time, that we had in the city of Hammond. I think he was, back then, there was no term limits for councilmen or councilwomen to be on the council. But because I think that Councilman Dangerfield was such a tough player, that eventually they put in a term limit so they could get him off the council. But, you know, so as, as fellow councilmen, and, you know, we all look up to Mr. Dangerfield, you know, Councilman Blunt and I, along with our Councilman Hood, who served, who's been on the council during that time, as well as Councilman, Councilman Mike Williams, and a former Councilman Bobby Martin, we worked together to create this, this day where we can set aside and remember the efforts and the work that Wilbert L. Dangerfield did to make Hammond what it is today. So, so our goal is to, is to recognize a member of our community that exemplifies, you know, Wilbert L. Dangerfield. So I'm gonna read the resolution to you real quick. It's not that long. And obviously, we wanna do that during Black History Month, because Black History Month has a significant meaning to, to Wilbert Dangerfield and many of us. So that's the purpose of doing it now. But the, but the ordinance, or the resolution reads, whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Wilson, a prominent historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of Negroes throughout the history of the United States. And whereas in 1976, the celebration of Negro Week was expanded to include the entire month of February and became known as Black History Month, a federally recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunities for all Americans to reflect on the significant role that African-Americans have played in the shaping of the United States' history. I'll just pause there and say that African-American history is American history. Whereas many African-Americans have contributed to the development of the city of Hammond and its accomplishments impacted our lives through their work in education, healthcare, business, and government. And whereas the city of, the city council endeavors to enhance the council's relationship with the Tenshuipah African American Heritage Museum, the Second Saturday Breakfast Organization, and the Martin Luther King Park Association. And whereas the city of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within the Hammond community, including Tenshuipah Parish, who have positively impacted the lives of African-Americans. And whereas, and now let it be resolved, now be it resolved, that the city of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, this, for the city of Hammond, the Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence to a deserving citizen or citizens who made significant accomplishments that positively reflect on the city of Hammond or who represent through their actions, the commitment and willingness to go the extra mile to make a positive impact in our community, in the city of Hammond. So that's the, that's the resolution that was written. So when you think about what we're doing, we're, we're making that decision to recognize, and I'm sure that you guys know who it's gonna be, but I'll leave it up for the council, council president to talk about now. So that's, so we're happy that you guys are here. It's a great chance for us to fellowship once again, and thank you guys for being here. And you're up next? I think next is...
Actually, we're gonna go ahead and have Robbie Carter.
Okay, okay. We're gonna have Robbie, Robbie Carter, Representative Robbie Carter from District 72. 72, okay.
I sure do thank y'all tonight. I'm here to honor one of my great friends, Mr. Henry Jackson. I have to consider myself a very lucky person, because not only did I know Mr. and Ms. Jackson, but I also knew Mr. Wilbert Dangerfield and his wife. When I first ran for office, Mr. Dangerfield and I would make our rounds. And I was 35 years old, and I would have a hard time keeping up with him. He was such a hustler. Mr. Dangerfield could hustle when it was time to, to get something done, and I really appreciate all the work that he did for me back then. I do have here a couple certificates. One, I talked to the governor just a few minutes before I came in here, and he said he sure wished he could be here tonight, but we do have a certificate from him. And it's United States of America, State of Louisiana, John Bell Edwards, Governor. Official statement. In the name and by the authority of the State of Louisiana, I, John Bell Edwards, together with the citizens of this great state, dare, who, dare, do hereby give special recognition to Henry Jackson, Sr., in acknowledgement of his dedicated service to the community, city, and state, and for receiving the 2018 Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. Signed, John Bell Edwards, February 21, 2018. So proud to have somebody from Tenshuipah Parish who can do things like that. Now, it's great to have a governor from Tenshuipah. I also have here State of Louisiana, on behalf of the Louisiana House of Representatives, Representative Robbie Carter and Speaker Taylor Barra, hereby extends heartiest congratulations and commendation to Henry Jackson, Sr., recipient of the Wilbert Dangerfield Award for Excellence. Signed, February 27, 2018.
Good evening. Psalm 21 and 3 reads, "You came to greet him with rich blessings and placed a crown of pure gold on his head." Mr. Henry, people have been talking about you. The biography. Henry Jackson was born in Greensburg, Louisiana, and moved to Hammond when he was five years old. He attended Greenville Park High School. His first job was a delivery boy at Woody's Grocery. He then went to work for Mr. and Mrs. Ford Grant...
He then went to work for Mr. and Mrs. Ford Graham for 17 years. He became a school bus driver for the Tanjapahoa Parish School System and retired with 30 years of service. In 1972, Marshal Vic Anderson, City Marshal for the City Court of Hammond, 7th Ward, Tanjapahoa Parish, hired Henry Jackson as a deputy marshal. Marshal Anderson and Deputy Jackson served court orders issued from City Court of Hammond, subpoenas, civil citations, and evictions were served in the jurisdiction of the 7th Ward. After Marshal Anderson retired, his son Gordon Anderson was elected as city marshal in 1975. Henry Jackson Senior was appointed the first African-American chief deputy marshal under Marshal Gordon Anderson's administration. The office has grown since Chief Deputy Jackson first became a deputy. His duties included the daily supervision of other deputies, as well as supervising courtroom security. Henry Jackson retired from the marshal's office along with Marshal Gordon Anderson on December 31st, 2014. He served the people of the 7th Ward of Tanjapahoa for 42 years, and his dedication and love for this community will never be forgotten. Mr. Jackson's accomplishments and recognitions have been many over the years. He was trained in courtroom security at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Glencoe, Georgia in 1991. In 1993, he received a certificate of training from the Institute of Law Enforcement at Northeast Louisiana University in Civil Law. He has been a member of the Magnolia State Police Officers Association for 43 years, and to this day, still attends annual meetings. In 2006, he was awarded the Rapp Carmon Moore Leadership Award. In 2011, he was recognized by Greater Mount Bethel Missionary Baptist Church Youth Program during Black History Month for his inspiration to other youth and the community of Tanjapahoa Parish. In 2013, Mr. Jackson reigned as Grand Marshal for the annual Martin Luther King Celebration here in Hammond. He has been a member of Pear Ridge Church of Christ for over 50 years, under the current leadership of Pastor James Nunnery. He has been married to Mrs. Betty Moore Jackson for 59 years, and to this union, six children, Henry Jackson Junior, Betty Van Wells, Becky Hughes, Barbara Jackson, Benis Cotton, and Becky Wells. They have been blessed with 10 grandchildren and 19 great-grandchildren. Henry has served the public with respect and courtesy. He has been commended with his integrity and professionalism over the years. His presence in our community has been a blessing to many. His life made Dr. King's dream a reality. Henry Jackson? You're a legacy in the 7th Ward.
First, I wanna thank God for allowing us to be here tonight on this very special occasion. Second, I wanna thank my wife for being here.
All right, all right.
And my mother-in-law, next to her there, that's Henry's sister. That old girl, 84 years old. Yes, indeed. Henry Jackson, you know, when I thought about this, Henry was sitting in front of the church. I'm ushering in the back, and I don't know where you could pass, and Hammond didn't see him. Y'all know he cut grass for everybody, and he out-hipping everybody, and all that fell upon me sitting back there, I said, "That's my man, right there. Come up here." All right, with the honor of councilman, as President of the Councilman and the administration of Pete Pena Pinto, I present to you the Wilbur Dangerfield Excellent Award. Thank you.
I really, I really don't know where to start. First, I would like to thank God, that is the man that looks over us every day of our life, is God. To my pastor, Father Nunnery, appreciate you for coming by and that beautiful prayer that you prayed. May God ever bless you. To the bath of the city of Hammond, to Pete, thank you so much. President of the council, President Johnny Black, Councilman LaBarre. Did I call Johnny Black? LaBarre, LaBarre Marshall, council lady. And to all of you, it's just a blessing that God allowed you to come, to be a part of this celebration. There's so many people, and I would like to call names, but when you start calling names, you get yourself in trouble, but I'm not getting in trouble. And when I look over the audience and I see a lovely lady, I served on four judges, Judge Ford, Judge Dufrin, and Judge Conflor, and I served on the beautiful lady. And any time I'm being a comedian, everybody wanna introduce her. But gosh, she's a beautiful lady. That's all right. To my friend Carter, Mike, appreciate you. Retired Judge Carter, appreciate you taking out of your business, Captain, to stop by and be a part of this celebration. Hey, maybe looking, just look over the audience. You might have read the article in the paper she just read, that my first job was a delivery boy. Some people got offended, because I wasn't a delivery boy, but that's what was happening at those things. But I wanna let you know, I was a boy then, I'm a man now. And I would probably know that. There's a lot of lovely ladies that are here, the grand, granddaughter, Diane, and that is the Congress. Let me just keep looking, I don't wanna mess up. And all of you, I'm gonna just say thank you. Oh, Tom Anderson, where you at? I'm telling you, Tom Anderson, he's still in the building. All right, he backed that up. Oh, Lord, see, by calling names, you get in trouble. Administration, there's the guy that talks. All right. And I'd like to thank Tara Rhys Miller for coming out here tonight. Tara Rhys! And I have a lovely daughter that I said here, I'm gonna call her, she just got to say something, come on back here. This is my baby, 'cause she's a lady now.
Well, I would like to give thanks where thanks is due, and that is to our heavenly Father, yeah, for allowing all of us to be present on this evening. And we all know that my dad, as always, that's my father, and he's a good man, and he's always been a family man. You know, I always tell him some things that he used to do, he, "I don't remember that, I didn't do that." He'd come home sometimes and he'll have a popsicle, popsicles, we had them, six of us. He'd break them and hang them. Everybody would have a popsicle, and he'd give us all popsicles, and we'd be so happy, because our dad has come home and granted us with this. And I just wanna just tell him that I'm just so proud of him. And you know, we always, we always say a saying, "Give me my flowers while I'm here." And at night, you all have granted him this wish, and I wanna thank Sister Dangerfield for this beautiful award. Thank you, Captain, yes, thank you, thank you. To my family, to you all, I thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's our baby. See, I always leave a special laugh. I'm very thankful for you two, the late husband, you're Wilbur and I was good friends. Wilbur was the type of person that liked to tell jokes, and he gets more kick out of telling his own jokes than anybody else. And he'd get glad and glad and glad, that's the way it was. But he just was a good guy, we parted together, we lied together, we... Back to the Peace Office Association, people, are you here? Hold your hand up, all right, all right. Yeah, I miss him, I got a friend, she working on something else, I mean, Chantae, hold your hand up, Chantae. All right, I think that's about the size of it, and I can, I thank you all, I thank you all. Oh, I forgot to leave my oldest daughter, that old daughter.
I'm not a big taco, but I really appreciate what everybody's done for my father, 'cause like we say, he's a wonderful man, and they say, he's phenomenal. He's always good, all the time, all the time.
All right, Councilperson Wilson, you're there smiling, you're always CEO, God bless you.
God bless you.
All right, all right, we just thank everybody for stopping by and being a part of this tonight. The Marshal's Office, some of the present Marshal people are here, Pastor Daley back there. We have the State President of the Paco Peace Office Association, he is here, and Mr. Marsh, his job is when that train have accident, he got to go and write up the stuff, it don't be light, it don't be like... I'll be like Steve Harvey. May God bless you, may God bless you.
Mr. Henry, let me read this for you.
You wanna read it again?
For the individual achievements and his commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community for his selfless willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life specifically in the African-American community. An individual has not started living until he can raise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity, of all indications.
All right, thank you. Come on, the council, come on, council.
Hey, Henry, let us close that ten...
You finished yet? Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, you know, do I come back again or not?
Once again, a good evening. I'm standing before you to give closing remarks and say a prayer for the food, and I have you all out of here, but I would be amiss if I didn't say something about Brother Henry Jackson, being a longstanding member of Pear Ridge. It is an honor to be here on tonight to say a few kind remarks. As I stand before you to deliver the closing remarks, I would like to personally congratulate Brother Henry Jackson on accomplishing the milestone of achieving the Wilbur Dangerfield Award. As I look around and see the people in here on tonight celebrating this great accomplishment, it is understood that this is a great step in his journey and should be recognized for its immense significance. The achievement of receiving this award is not only an act of personal commitment, but also of great pride and a lot of hard work as well. Brother Henry Jackson worked hard to get to this day, and his work did not go to waste, and we thank you for acknowledging his work. If anyone knows Henry Jackson like I know Brother Jackson, this is not an end goal for him, but instead, this is a part of a larger journey that's in his life. Brother Henry is an inspiration to all of us, that wherever your life takes you, you make sure that God is a part of your plans, and wherever God leads you, you need to trust in Him always. And while you are here, God expects His children to leave their mark and an impression on someone that we have come in contact when we are on life's road. And speaking of leaving a mark, you know, at Pear Ridge, we have Bible class, and every now and then, Brother Henry loves to hear this short story that I would tell from time to time. And the story is centered around a man and his son. And the story was of this rebellious child, and so it was told that one day, this dad and his son was in the backyard, and every time his son would do something bad, his dad would take a nail and nail it into a tree. And every time he would do something that would hurt his father, his dad would take that nail and nail it into the tree, until the tree one day was just filled with nails. And one day, the son came outside and he saw this tree with his dad nailing, happened to be nailing one of the nails, and he asked his dad, "Dad, what does this mean?" So his dad looked at him and says, "Son, every time you've done something wrong, I've nailed a nail into this tree." And so it hurt his son to his heart, and his son said, "Dad, I wanna fix this. So every time that I do a good deed, I want you to take one of them nails out of that tree." So over time, he does a good deed, and the dad would remove it, and then he'd do another deed, and the dad would remove another nail, till finally, all of the nails were gone. So he looks at his son, he says, "Son, come here." He said, "I want you to know that, yes, you've done good deeds, but I want you to look at this tree. All of the nails are gone, but there's still marks left in that tree." Now, I'm not saying that Brother Henry has not left any bad marks, we all have our shortcomings, but it is telling. It is a story to be told, listening to all of these stories about the good marks that he's left. Brother Henry, you have made an outstanding commitment and a great mark on this community. For that, we honor you, we thank you, and please, give him another round of applause. God bless him, well done. At this time, we're going to bow our heads in a word of prayer for the food that we'll be eating on tonight. Dear Father, we thank you for this food which we are about to partake of, we thank you for all of those who prepared the meal for us, dear Lord. We thank you, dear Father, for once again bringing us out safely, and we're asking that as we leave here, you return us to our homes safely on tonight. Lord, we ask that you keep Brother Henry and his family in your care, dear Father, and in your love, and we ask that you watch over everyone in here on tonight, dear Father, who is under my breath, dear Lord, that you continue to bless them where they stand in need of. We ask all of these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.